...now come to order, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Binzbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Patana.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Council liaison Boden.
Here.
And council liaison Camacho.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of January 19th, 2016. We have one item on the study session agenda tonight, and that is update on the certificate of necessity for ambulance services. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Mayor Carlet and councilmembers. As the mayor mentioned, we just have one item on our study session tonight, and it's an important item. And the council has addressed this several times in the past, and probably most notably in about three months ago, I think, in a morning, Saturday morning session, in your first seminar that the council has had, to really drill down into service delivery, and this was the area you chose to drill down, and we appreciated that. Because you had an opportunity to understand that the complexities that we have to move from where we are today into providing ambulance service to the citizens of Peoria. And we believe that it's a good move for us in terms of providing the best service to our citizens and residents. But it's a challenging one to get from where we are to where we need to be. And one of those challenges is the regulatory process in Arizona, where we need to go through a process, as you know, that's termed our certificate of necessity. We have to, in essence, prove our capacity to deliver the service and that there are not private sector entities that are positioned to provide as good a service as we can. So what we have tonight is an update for you on where we are in that process. Also, a little bit on the request for proposals process that we're going through to private ambulance providers right now, because we will still be needing them certainly in the short term and probably for some considerable time, even after we begin patient transport ourselves. So with that, I'll turn it over to our fire medical chief, Bobby Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. We're gonna be updating and somewhere along the line. And I'd like to just take a moment and introduce to you some special visitors that we have from the Commission for Fire Accreditation International. And they're here doing their site visits, so they've been working very hard for us and we appreciate it very much. But let me begin by introducing Jim White, the fire chief of Winter Parks, Florida. He's a team leader.
Welcome.
And with him, he has Barry Shughart. From, he's the assistant fire chief at Marine Corps Air Station out of Beaufort, South Carolina. And then with him also is, and I hope I don't butcher this too bad, but Bill Macharoski. Close, not close enough, though. And Bill is a fire chief at US Army Fort Leavenworth, Kansas. And they had one other individual, April Taylor, that was a Homeland Security Director for the city of Orlando, and she had to fly out. So I just wanted to introduce them and thank them very much for their hard work.
Welcome and thank you for all that you're doing. We really appreciate it.
They're here doing the peer review portion of the reaccreditation, which is an awful lot of work. Jeff and I went over and had a chance to say hello to them this afternoon, and they're plowing through the data. And I know they'll do an excellent job going through all of our fire and emergency medical.
Thank you. To begin with, I want to recap a little bit, just for our audience and some of you that weren't here during the beginning of this process. But we'll be talking about today about the current ambulance service model, recent history of private ambulance providers, ambulance service, RFP, and what an ideal model looks like, overview of the CON process, and our current status in the Peoria CON process, and then kind of the next steps that we'll be going to. But it has always been our mission to provide a dedicated, reliable, and consistent ambulance service for the citizens of Peoria residents. And I'll explain a little bit kind of what we mean by that. But our current ambulance service model is Peoria medical, fire medical response to all the medical calls and the privates transport the patients into the hospital is, on the advanced life support calls is we'll keep the continuity of care by riding in with the ambulance and keeping control of the patient and the patient treatment. Studies have shown that the outcome's always better when you have some continuity of care all the way through. The basic life support calls is the ambulance will normally take them to the hospital, and we will not go along with them. The current ambulance service model, which came to us through the contract of PMT, now it rolled over to Rural Metro and now AMR. But that contract was kind of a unique contract. It was a dedicated model, which meant that we had four full-time ambulances in the city earmarked for Peoria only. They didn't go anywhere else. They stayed in the city, provided service. And two peak-time ambulances also within the city that was just stayed within the city. Going forward, what you're starting to see, and I'll talk a little bit about where this started with Rural Metro, is that you're starting to see a model that it's a non-dedicated area response model. What that means is that the privates will have a cache of ambulance somewhere in the West Valley. And from there, from that hub, is they'll dispatch them to where the calls are or those start shifting from city to city if they think that certain parts of the day is busier in one city. So it's a whole different model from response times that we're accustomed to. Recent history on the ambulance service market is in 2010, 2010, Peoria entered into a contract with PMT. And it was an unique relationship, and PMT had some unique owners that grew up here in the valley. Bob Ramsey and Pat Cantalme. And what Pat Cantalme brought to the table, Pat was retired captain from Phoenix Fire and was there when the Phoenix Fire ambulance service was being shaped about 35 years ago. And Pat knew that the ideal model was already set by the infrastructure of the fire departments. That we set our fire stations throughout the city to reflect the best possible response times that we could possibly provide. And we do a lot of planning in the future for future stations to accommodate that. And so Pat took that model to the ambulance service, which was very unique. And we had a very high level of service at that time. And about 2012, Rural Metro comes in and buys out PMT. And you start to see the new model surfacing. Where no longer do they want to keep a dedicated model, but more of a regional response model. And then about a year later is Rural Metro declares bankruptcy. And it kind of shakes up the trees everywhere in the valley, including with the Department of Health Services, who are very nervous because we have seen ambulance companies across the country that one day they just close shop and there's no services the next day. So DHS was very nervous. They were talking about providing or giving out temporary COOs, which were under the rules at that time was like 90 days. And who is gonna make an investment for 90 days with no pathway to CON ship, if you may? And so it worried everybody. At that time is when we started some serious discussions as to what the future is gonna look like with the privates and if that was gonna meet the high goals that we had for the citizens of Peoria. And the answers came back that it would not, that we needed to start looking very seriously at providing our own ambulance with the boundaries of the city of Peoria. And then in 2014, Rural Metro emerges from bankruptcy and said everything was well, that everything was being reorganized. And if we look in retrospect, they already had started discussions with another ambulance company, AMR, and being bought out. So and then this year, this past year, AMR bought out Rural Metro. And again, the model is the typical private ambulance provider model of a regional provider. So I think at that point is that we started going through the CON process and applying for CON. I'll let Jim kind of finish up.
Thank you, chief and mayor council. I just wanted to continue on and talk a little bit about the ideal ambulance service model, or at least what we see for the near future. And to mention, we've mentioned the CON process. And reiterate, that's essentially a business license approval to operate an ambulance service in the state of Arizona. And that's contingent or a precursor to everything else we need as far as Medicare approval, et cetera, to move forward in the process. What we would, the ideal model, and we're close, and I'll get to that in the next slide, is that we have a certificate of necessity, we provide core service, and then we continue to work collaboratively with the private partners to phase in that service over time. And I'll just reach over here. Little timeline on the CON process, where we're at. June 25th, 2015, we submitted the CON application. We worked for months prior to that to put the application together. On June 30th, relatively quickly, DHS completed their administrative review. The administrative review was essentially to say that we had all, answered all the questions, all the parts of the CON were there, and they would progress with the substantive review. Substantive review took substantially longer, and that's where they looked at every little portion of the CON, verified that, including the financial portion. And at the end of that, they determined that we were fit and proper, that we obviously could move forward with the ambulance service. The last part of that particular, this first phase, was the public comment period. And Arizona law provides for another CON holder, either public or private, to comment or intervene in the CON process, at which point that would go to an administrative hearing, and it would be a much more prolonged, protracted process. We're very happy to report, this is extremely good news for us. That public comment period closed January 15th, 5 o'clock last Friday, and there were no interveners. So as we move forward, there's no opposition as we look to implement the ambulance service in the future. Next steps, we aren't done. This represents a milestone in the process. The application now proceeds to the director of the Arizona Department of Health Services, and she has the final determination. The timeline is not defined, but we could possibly see a decision from the director within the next four weeks. And I'll turn it over to Deputy City Manager Jeff Tyne.
Thank you. As Jim.
Jeff, excuse me, before you move on from the previous part, can I ask how you see, how you see the new service, especially in the interim when we're still working with AMR, how our response times will be affected? If they were gonna go to a regional model, and now we're going to this model where we're doing ours as well as using some of theirs, what are we looking at?
Mayor council is, we're working through that in the RFP, and that'll be defined and negotiated. But hopefully, we won't see a change or a major change throughout, through the contract. But if we, we're gonna watch it very closely. And, you know, if it starts to change to where it's, we don't think it's acceptable because the criteria at DHS is very different from what we have asked in the contracts in the past. Contract in the past, we've asked for the provider to respond to the calls in nine minutes or less, 90% of the time. DHS requires that they respond 90% of the time, less than 20 minutes. So, I mean, it's a greater response time. So we've always held the bar very high for the people we contracted with. So if we start to see that, then our recommendation would be to speed up the process of moving our own service in.
So when you talk about the private model moving to non-dedicated ambulances or more regional ambulance model, that's how they can do that? They stay within the DHS timeline or time limit of 20 minutes or less versus what we would require them to be at nine? Is that how that happens?
And I speak for the chief. I think just to clarify, normally when we enter into an agreement with these ambulance services, we are entering in with certain standards that are below that DHS standard. That would be the anticipated amount. So it's, if that group still considers to go to a non-dedicated model, we still have an expectation that they maintain a service level that's much higher than that.
Okay, good. Glad to hear that. Thank you.
If I may, just speak a little bit to some of the financial considerations, because obviously this is a significant investment for the city of Peoria to undertake. And Jim had mentioned that part of the CON application process is really to go through a pretty extensive financial review to, of course, ensure the entity has the means to do that. So as a result, there's a lot of legwork that has already been undertaken. And credit to our fire department and our finance and budget department, working very extensively on this effort. Ultimately, what we're looking at is an operation that would have the city supporting staff and the support for five ambulances as well as two reserve vehicles. And then all of the, that would be staffed through two-person companies, one EMT and one paramedic per ambulance. And so with that in mind, our investment can certainly be pretty considerable. The fortunate news, as you can see from our slide, is this is really structured to be a full recovery, revenue recovery model. As we went through all of our models, as we went through the process with Department of Health Services on the CON, we showed that we would be able to recover these costs as structured and maintain the service levels that we currently are enjoying. So ultimately, what we're looking at is it's about a $7 million operation. This would be recovered through base rates, through a mileage rate, medical supply, reimbursement, and the like to ultimately get through it. Now also, there would be some startup costs that we would anticipate. As we are beginning this process, as Jim had mentioned, there's a lot of other steps that we still have to go through to get to this point. So we do expect that there would be some startup costs that we would have to undertake. Working with Finance Budget Department, they have placed marked that money so that we would be ready and positioned to support that if necessary right away. So we anticipate right now it would be required in the next year's budget process, but it has been place marked right now for us to be able to work on that. So any other questions regarding the financial aspects? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Am I reading this correctly? It'll be five ambulances that are in service, and we'll have two on reserve all the time? It's a 40% reserve factor, if I did my math right. Is that typical for?
What we have, Mayor and council, and Finn, is what we have had in the past in our contracts is four full-time and then two peak-time ambulances. We think that the five full-time would equate to what we've been accustomed in a high level of delivery service.
So would, I probably didn't phrase my question correctly. So are the two reserves gonna be sitting, can they, can just spares to replace ones that actually break down or need to go in for service? Or are they sitting there where other firefighters, paramedics can jump in and go on a run if necessary? I guess is my question.
Yes. And Mayor council is that we anticipate that, all the above, is that there are reserves so that if one has to go in for maintenance as you replace it. However, during peak periods or that we can project when those peak periods are gonna be or during special events, is we'll be able to utilize those reserve ambulances to place in service for given amount of periods.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, thank you. This transition happens over time. So we're not purchasing all of this equipment at once. We're starting with how many initially?
Right. You know, tentatively, we have to prepare that we would be able to enter into this business right away. However, we're going to be exploring with some of the other partners that are out there, the private partners, if they would like to take on this service. So depending on how those negotiations go, we would know that. But we're anticipating something along the lines of the city would have probably a couple of ambulances in the first year that we would nonetheless need to acquire and be able to undertake. And then we would partner with the outside entity for the additional amount. And then over time, the city would assume more of those ambulances through acquisition. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So does that, is that the AMR that we're currently working with? Or does you start all over with that process?
Well, it's a good question. Right now, our sense is that AMR is, has the sole provider of CON, of ambulance service in Maricopa County. So we anticipate they will be the player. If another entity were to come in, in time, we would be able to negotiate with them.
Okay.
But at this point, it does appear to be AMR.
Yeah. Just to add a little bit more, Vice Mayor, we are presently out for a request for proposals with the private ambulance providers under the scenario that we will be moving into the ambulance business. So negotiations will occur over the next few weeks with respect to how and with whom we will be contracting in the future. So that'll be coming back to you as an additional item shortly.
So it's possible we'll be servicing Peoria simultaneously?
Yes.
So that, so that relationship's critical.
Yes.
And then one other question regarding the financial piece, the billing. Is that something we would do internally or would we outsource that? Because that's a, another.
Sure. Mayor, council, is we're exploring, there's probably three or four different alternatives as to some billing companies, that's all they do. You have Phoenix that were, Phoenix Fire that we're discussing with, that does all their billing and how that would work. And so we're exploring the, what it would cost us, going through the different alternatives and the best possible billing rates that we would receive. I just want to add one other thing that since AMR did come on the scene is that they have been very honest with us and working very upfront with us. And they held to their word, because a while back is we weren't shy asking the question if they were gonna intervene or not. And they told me at that time, the regional manager, Glenn Persick, that they would not. And so it went back and forth a little bit in between that time, but the relationship is real positive right now. And I think that we'll end up with a good partnership where we'll phase in, they'll phase out, and they'll still be able to provide backup service. And they'll be happy because they'll have the inter-facility agreements with the hospitals for Peoria transporting patients from hospital to hospital where we have no interest in that business.
Let me also comment a little bit on the first part of your question with respect to billing. That's a very important function as we move into this. And having managed this in two other cities, the same sort of service that we're talking about here, I know firsthand how important that billing function is to getting the cost recovery that Jeff described. So we're gonna be taking a real hard look at that and making sure that we're monitoring the way that we do the billing, the efficacy of whomever we contract with or whether we bring individuals on staff to do that. It's real important.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You said we had four at this time ambulance for the city of Peoria?
Yes, councilman.
And now you want five. Will that be enough for the whole city of Peoria? We're still gonna have PMT and Rural Metro coming into Peoria and then doing a service here?
Mayor Councilman Leoni, is, since we have four and then two part-time ambulances for peak period right now, is that we think that the five will cover those peak periods and be more than suffice for the city of Peoria. And this is where it's crucial where the partnership comes in, is that we have a contract that in, seasonally, when Super Bowl comes into town or some other big event comes into town, is that they can shore up or back up our needs, the privates. And right now, it's just AMR is the only sole source.
So we're gonna be getting more ambulance later on, or are you gonna just stay five and two reserves?
As the city grows. If I may, I think certainly what we'll be watching is development patterns. And as the city continues to grow and both commercial and residential development, we would take stock to that. And certainly key to that and is continuity of service and a high service level. That's one of the advantages, of course, for the city of Peoria to be able to undertake that, is that will be our focus. But we'll continue to watch just as the city grows. And if there's any strain on our service levels, then we would come back to the city council for necessary requests.
Also, I remember years ago, on the ambulance, we had an RN on there. We still have those, or is that, is that all done with it?
Mayor, councilman Leoni, we do not have any RNs.
No RNs?
And the privates have EMTs on their ambulances.
So you got, so you got one EMT and one paramedic?
That's what we're proposing, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, we have a designated EMS department or division? Or would we rotate those that we currently have on staff, or how would that work? So would we have, you know, because right now, being in, on an engine is, you know, some firefighters and paramedics really love that aspect of it, which is different than just focusing on the medical aspect of it. So would there be a rotation or would we just have dedicated staff professionals in an EMS division?
Mayor and councilmember, Vice Mayor Binzbacher, is we will integrate them to all our services. So they'll be cross-trained in fire and all the other services we provide, and will be part of that unit, that crew. So that crew is that they may rotate during their tour. If we're seeing high activities, more on the ambulance or vice versa. It gives us a lot of flexibility by cross-training and being part of the mainstream.
Yes. For councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. On these five ambulance plus the two, where they gonna be stationed? At a fire station or a private area?
Mayor, councilman Leoni, they'll be in the fire stations.
All four of them?
All five of them.
All five of them, sorry. And when will this take place?
Well, in putting our plan together, if everything falls in place, where we get our CON within the next month and we start hiring and everything falls exactly in place, we'll probably start turning our wheels in November of this year. It's the best-case scenario. We may be able to shorten that, but that's kind of the target.
So we'll have about maybe four different ambulance service in Peoria? Rural Metro?
No. I didn't mean to interrupt, but it would be Peoria Fire Medical Transport. And then the only other company that were, that's in town right now that has a CON that we could work with as it is today would be AMR. So there would be two. And regardless of if other companies come into town or get into the business, is our RFP would be with one provider. So it would be us phasing in as throughout the next few years, they phase out.
So you think five ambulance services is gonna be enough?
Yeah. Councilman Leoni, I believe so. If, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now, the city doubles, it certainly would, we would be putting that into the form and coming back to you and saying, you know, that's not gonna suffice, and here's the new plan and what we think will pay for itself.
Good. You know, we gotta protect our constituents.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm gonna make sure they get to the hospital time.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chief, I know you've been working on this for a really long time, a year and a half now, I think it is. I just want to thank you for everything that you've done. It's a considerable amount of work and quite a feat to make sure that we not only maintained a good relationship with AMR, but found them not to want to intervene. So that's tremendous, really. It's so great. And I know that we're going to have to be working with them as time goes on for however long we need to, and it's nice to know that that relationship is there, and we can do that as we transition. But I think, you know, with the state of the ambulance services and how they've been going in and out and going in and out, I think we were in a precarious situation. So for us not to say, this is a core service, we need to protect our citizens, we need to take this over, you know, we would have been remiss. So I'm really glad that we took this on, and I'm really glad that it's been so successful up to this point. And I'm looking forward to us being able to let our citizens know that we saw a need, and we jumped on it and did everything that we could to make sure that there's continuity of service, and that this core service that they expect from their city is being handled in a really good way for them. So thank you for all your work on it.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much, but I'd be remiss. We started about two and a half years ago.
Two and a half years, wow.
And.
Which ambulance service were you working with then?
PMT at the time. But it's been a real cohesive teamwork, and I got to thank Mr. Swenson for putting the teams together, and Deputy City Manager Jeff Tyne for facilitating some of those meetings, and the gentleman here to my right that has done all the hard work and gone to just untamed amount of meetings and hours that he spent and spending at home. And then you got finance, budgeting, and all those folks that have been very involved. So it extends out extensively, and it's a tribute to the members of the city and the staff members and department heads that work very cohesively together to get something going.
Well, thanks to everybody who was involved.
And thank you for your support.
It is certainly a big contribution to the greater good in the city of Peoria. Thank you. Anything else?
I got one more question. On these ambulances, what's the cost for one? Now, that's equipment, EMTs, paramedics?
Roughly, I mean, just a ballpark figure is, it's about a million dollars in ambulance with everything inclusive. And we expect to make a little bit more than that in revenue. So it's full recovery.
No, but how much ambulance?
About a million dollars in ambulance.
A million dollars in ambulance?
With staffing 24/7 times three shifts and all the equipment and everything that goes with it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you. We are adjourned.